If you love liberty, declare your independence by signing the Shire Society Declaration at shiresociety.com.
Has to do with the Cheshire Coalition for Tobacco Free about raising the legal minimum We have comment cards that you've been filling out. If you indeed want to speak before the committee, the city clerk will give you one of these and be brought to us. I do ask that, in just fairness of time, everybody gets a chance to speak, that you keep your comments to under three minutes. I'll do the best I can up here, just to try to keep a timer on it. Once again, it's not to infringe on how much you want to talk, but we want to try to give everybody a chance to talk that wants to. I do ask that we stick to the agenda, we keep it civil. There's nothing personal here. We're just talking about the proposal as it's facing the city council. So with that said, let me go to my little timer here, just so we can try to keep things moving along. Here we go. Okay. First piece in person, Katie McNally?
Go ahead. I'm wondering if we can start with the petitioner to...
It is.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
And I was under the understanding that I would have my name here next.
Yeah, just the name and address and then take it, please.
My name is Katie McNally. I'm the program manager for the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Communities at Cheshire Medical Center. Thank you for continuing this discussion about raising the age from 18 to 21. That's our real goal, is to get the tobacco products, including vapes, out of the middle in high schools, and this strategy will help us to do that. Since we started the process with you before, in July, we heard from other towns in the region in favor of this measure. We also learned that the state of Massachusetts passed a statewide tobacco 21 law, and now the total has risen from 330 last time we heard, to 340 cities and counties in 21 states and six states overall with statewide policies. So just a little backstory, this wasn't, or shouldn't have been a surprise, really been working on this for over a year. We started out, last year, working in the schools, helping schools with curriculum around Kick Butts Day, and I'm thinking you're going to hear from somebody who participated in that process. The kids from the Keene Middle School actually did a presentation for Mary Lane, and they received very favorable response from Mary Lane in the spring, although I think he had some doubts about whether or not this could be implemented or not. So we've been keeping on with the process since then. I have been in touch with the coordinator for Dover Youth to Youth, Dana Mitchell, who says that he's not having any problems, or they're not having any problems, in Dover with their ordinance, so far, so good, he said. And so I just have to say, I appreciate the conversation. I see all sides of this issue, but I have to say that my biggest concern that I heard from folks was that we were going to be criminalizing tobacco use by kids, and that's not what we're doing. We've never criminalized tobacco use in this community. I was on a committee to work on policies at the Keene High School for substance misuse and tobacco policies, and we really have worked hard to help anybody that wants to quit to do so. So we're getting away from picking people out and for penalizing them and making it a crime to be in possession or to use tobacco because it's an addictive substance, and we're aware of that. So I just want to make that clear, that we're not proposing a new initiative to chase down teenagers, we're actually proposing that we just stop selling to anyone from 18 to 20, so that we can keep it out of the middle school and the high school. We're looking at our county census recently, approximately 76,000 residents in Cheshire County, 3,500 are, about 3,500 are aged 18 to 20. So the number for all youth under 18 is 76,96, so almost 8,000. So according to the Adult Youth Survey, or Adult Survey, Youth, not Adult Survey, sorry, data for our region, approximately 11% of youth 18 to 20 vape, which is about 421 individuals. Our goal is to improve the health and the future of nearly 8,000 of our county's residents. So we really feel like we really need to advocate for the biggest number. According to a study in the American Journal of Public Health, the maximum immediate loss of sales would be from 2% to 4% of the total. According to an Institute of Medicine report, which is a trusted source, there's only expected to be 12% reduction among 18 to 20-year-olds, and that would equal about one-half of a percent in a reduction in tobacco sales. So half of a percent. According to the Center for Disease Control, New Hampshire's annual healthcare costs are about $735 million each year, about 139 of those are Medicaid costs. That leads to an annual state and federal tax burden on all of us of $175 per household. According to trusted sources, I have a lot of trusted sources and a lot of endorsements, I put the endorsements in your packet, American School Pediatrics, Heart Association, Lung Association, Institute of Medicine, Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, are just a few of the many organizations that support this measure. If enacted, this is expected to actually reduce the overall smoking rate by 12%, decrease smoking initiation by 25%. So reducing youth initiation of tobacco products by 25% or a quarter is huge, and that's among youth 15 to 17. I've also heard the argument that if people are able to die for their country at 18, then they should be able to choose to smoke. And my response to that really is that the ages 21 for alcohol, we should have parity for that for the ages, and that would make it so much easier for our clerks and our retailers. And I should also say that my dad was a retired Air Force veteran who died in his 60s from tobacco-related cardiac issues, and he did die from his tour in Korea, but it was tobacco that actually killed him. So I just can't really appreciate too much that argument about our military. I think we should do more to save our young heroes and give them an opportunity to live the best quality of life. For those who maintain that vaping isn't bad, I'm concerned that there is evidence to show that vaping may lead to other tobacco use. 168,000 never cigarette smokers would initiate smoking due to the use of ends or electronic nicotine delivery devices, according to a study by Dartmouth based on population modeling. So that's stunning to me, and I can say from my experience as a tobacco cessation counselor that patients do come to me and say, "Yeah, I quit smoking, but then I saw that the vape was safe, safe, and so I started using that and now I'm back to smoking." So we know that that does, that can in fact trigger relapse with the nicotine addiction for those people who have stopped. I just want to remind you, and this is the biggest thing I think, is that in the Monadino Region, our youth are reporting getting the tobacco and vapes from social sources. Youth Risk Behavior Survey for 2017 showed that students reported, 46.7% of students reported that they were barbing them and not necessarily purchasing them from stores. About 15% said they were purchasing them from stores, and most of the kids said that they were actually getting them from other sources. So this ordinance will help us to reduce the amount of tobacco products, by definition includes electronic nicotine delivery devices. We're trying to keep that out of the schools, that's our goal. I want to be clear.
If you could kind of wrap up, Kate.
Yep.
Being a petitioner, I'm letting you go a little bit longer.
No, that's fine.
But would you like to wrap this up?
So I'm just wrapping it up, I'm near the end.
Good.
If you pass the ordinance, we're going to offer materials for stores at free, for free, there's no cost to the city, no cost to retailers. We'll also continue our vendor compliance checks with retailers to make sure that they're being responsible, retailers. And I just want to remind you that one of the biggest champions we've had in this community was Michael Blassos. He was able to, he made his restaurant smoke-free before any other restaurant in the state. He helped to get us to pass an ordinance here in Keene back in 2001, 2002. That really led the way for the state to pass the Indoor Smoking Act in 2008 to make it safe for all workers in bars and restaurants and all workplaces to be safe from secondhand smoke. So these initiatives start here. We can send a message to Concord right now that we want this to be a statewide law, but you know, you've always done a great job of protecting the youth in our community, and we'd like to see that continue with an initiative and a commitment to passing an ordinance that would make, that would increase the age from 18 to 21. So if you have any questions, I thank you very much for your time, I do appreciate it on behalf of the Coalition, the Coalition Advisory Board, and the youth in our community.
I think before we address our concern, we can ask after, in all fairness, everybody else, I want to get everybody up here that wants to say something, then we can get back and ask questions after, okay? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Jonathan Share.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
Can you hear me?
Yes. My name is John Share. I'm the Executive Director of the Union Convenience Store and Energy Markets Association. We're based in Massachusetts, but we represent convenience store issues, legislative and regulatory issues in New Hampshire as well as across New England. In this particular town, there are 20 retailers, and based on average employment numbers, we're looking at over 100 employees in these stores. These stores hire locally and provide valuable services to your community and hit back in a number of ways. They are, in fact, with respect to tonight's issue, the front lines, they are the face-to-face front lines in restricting access by minors, to minors. So we understand our retos, that is, understand your desire to do something with the issue. And I speak to the advocates as well, with minors using these products. But the reality is, is raising the minimum age to 21 will unfortunately do nothing but export those customers that are currently at those stores to neighboring towns. And it isn't just the tobacco revenue as well, it's what we call the market basket. It's all those other items that get sold to those customers when they come in to buy those products. Frankly, directly, it's just unrealistic to assume that an 18 to 20-year-old can't get in his or her car and go to a neighboring community and buy those same products that are no longer available to them in Keene. As elected officials, you have an obligation to business people in addition to the general public health. So accordingly, you really must be absolutely certain that your actions are going to have a major impact on reducing youth access, so that you can justify the harm that it will potentially do to these local businesses. Otherwise, the best thing to do is just look for alternatives. Trying to address this issue by isolating Keene is not the right approach. This is something, and I've heard Concord before, this is really something that needs to be addressed at a more macro level. The energy should be directed at Concord, or simply increase penalties for those bad actors, those minors that are using it, as well as those people that are of age selling it to those minors. While raising the age statewide has its own set of limitations, it will at least keep the playing field level city to city, town to town. Finally, a couple things actually, a couple statistics. At the end of the day, we all want to keep these products away from minors, we all do, retailers included. It's an important fact to know that in fiscal year 18, tobacco-related revenue in New Hampshire was $261,300,000. State funding for cessation and education program was just at under $1.3 million. That's .0047%. That's shameful. And sadly, New Hampshire's not alone, it's most states. And if the idea is to keep these products away through education and cessation programs, we should be talking to Concord and saying, "We need more of that money, that is rightfully ours to use for these purposes." Lastly, the FDA is taking a science-based thoughtful approach to whether or not the age should be raised nationally. The FDA, we should allow them the time to come to that ultimate conclusion. If you have any questions, oh, did you want to ask questions now?
I'm going to let everybody speak, and then if any of the committee has any particular questions, we'll address them.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Daniel Cavallaro?
Yep. Hot boy. Good to see you guys again. My name's Daniel Cavallaro, 341 Court Street, Keene, New Hampshire. You've read my letters, so you know how I feel about this, or I hope you do. But when it comes down to it, and the numbers, you know, they seem nice, like it's not going to hurt my business, but they're on a macro level. What about on a micro level? They don't know how well my business is doing, they don't know how much I will lose, and what issue does it solve? It solves a no issue. When a person wants to get their hands on something, they're going to get their hands on it. Doesn't matter if you raise the age from 18 to 21, from 21 to 25, doesn't matter. So whatever happens, we've never sold underage kids, never, yet somehow ends up in the schools. So what you're doing, few changes to 21, we're talking about creating a black market. And, sorry, my leg is kind of tired here. You're creating a black market, right? So now you have 21-year-olds coming into my store, dropping $500, and the Keene PD, they already have a lot to worry about. They have a heroin epidemic, and now we're talking about a jewelry epidemic? Are you kidding me? Are you kidding? I'm sorry, I just, it offends me as a business owner who built a business from nothing into something, now I'm opening a third store, and it offends me as a libertarian who believes that young adults should have their rights. And when you're 18, you're an adult, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're here. Sierra Quigley? Thank you. And we just need your name and your address, so the minute take here.
Hi, my name is Sierra Quigley, and I live on 9 Drummer Road. I'm in the 7th grade at Keene Middle School, and I'm here to speak to you tonight about raising the legal age to buy tobacco and tobacco products from 18 to 21. Three important words come to my mind when I think about tobacco and tobacco use. These three words are family, safety, and addiction. Families can be harmed a lot from someone using tobacco. My aunt and uncle vape, and my grandmother smokes. I'm very lucky enough to have never seen tobacco affect my family deeply, but I worry that something may happen in the future. My second word is safety. Obviously, by using tobacco products, you are putting your health and safety at serious risk. Tobacco use can lead to cancer and lead to a higher risk of stroke or death. So by using any type of tobacco product, you're putting your whole life on the line. My third word is addiction. Nine out of 10 adults started smoking underage and are still smoking today. Tobacco companies are targeting us, the younger kids, so that they can get us addicted at a younger age, so they can make money off of us for longer. Some people say that vapes are a better, safer way to smoke, like a good cigarette. But making e-cigarette products that aimed for people with flavors like cool mint and mango, and they may seem less risky for young people to try, but they are not healthier than smoking, and they are just as addictive and unsafe. Importantly, already there are six states and over 350 localities that have changed the age to purchase tobacco products from 18 to 21. Why not join them? There are many reasons why this would benefit people. The brain doesn't fully develop until the age of 25, so by raising the age limit to buy tobacco products from 21 would allow our brains to have more time to grow, be healthier, and possibly make better decisions in the future. I feel it is very, and very important as a kid to protect my own future. I was surprised to learn that there are already 200, over 20,000 kids in New Hampshire who are currently under age 18 now, who will eventually die from smoking-related illnesses. Also, healthcare costs overall for New Hampshire would be reduced. Smoking is responsible for $506 million in productivity loss. In closing, I want to thank you for your time, and I hope you will consider raising the legal age to buy tobacco from 18 to 21.
Thank you very much, you did phenomenal job.
Thank you.
If I get your name right there.
Yeah, I am...
Just your name and address and then take it.
It's Andy Huneck, 50 Dover Street here in Keene.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am opposed to raising the age from 18 to 21 for a few reasons. Some have already spoke on this, but I think this is going to hurt the local smoke shops and vape shops because they draw, they rely on that revenue for their sales and things like that. Plus also, it's going to, like somebody said earlier, allow people to go to other towns to buy it, and so the city's going to lose out on all that tax revenue that's coming in from these products. So plus, the New Hampshire state law is 18, and I don't see how it's legal to have one jurisdiction raise it to 21, it seems to go against the state law. So that's about all I have to say, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it. Okay, Robert Call?
My name is Robert Call, I'm at 109 Kendall Road, and I cannot support any legislation that will take away the rights of any New Hampshireites. What was said here today is ridiculous. Kate goes and says that it's to keep this stuff out of schools. What percentage of students are over the age of 21 in any Cheshire County school, not just Keene, anywhere in New Hampshire? What percentage is over the age of 18? Most students usually graduate 17, 18, maybe 19. What, does anyone graduate at 21, 22? Maybe we should just start, you know, raising it to 30 at this point in time. Because she claims that she wants to keep this out of schools, this does effectively do that.
Thank you very much. Christopher Ward?
Wade. All right, so I'm Christopher Wade, I'm at 109 Kendall Road. So first thing I'd like to do is propose that we eliminate nicotine, so coffee and other things for everybody, not just, you know, adults between 18 and 21. You know, there's a lot of bad things, and we all have, there's risks to all sorts of different things that we do in life, and it's, we don't make the decision for other people, we have no right to make the decision for other people on what risks they choose to, and what habits they take, choose to take up, or what activities they choose to take up. It's a great goal, not to smoke. I've never, I've never smoked in my life. I also don't drink, I also don't drink coffee. But I don't, I don't intend to take away the rights of others at any age, it's up to each individual to do that. The other thing I think is just, is absurd, is that you're trying to manipulate young kids, all right, into, you're basically making pawns out of them through the school system and bringing them in here to testify when they've clearly been manipulated by the very funds, by our very tax dollars here. That's wrong. You're doing the same thing that tobacco industry did for many, many years. So another thing that's really outrageous that's going on here is by passing this law, not only can the kids go, young kids, if they want to purchase cigarettes, to other towns, they can order them online. There's this thing called the internet. Where do you think, do you really think they're going and traveling to another town to buy cigarettes? They're not. They're just going to order them online, just like they do other things. In the 90s, I was ordering stuff online that I wasn't supposed to have. Do you think you're going to be able to control what these young people are buying? You're not. You're just basically taking the money and sending it to other towns, and other countries for that matter, or businesses located in other countries. And this isn't the first time I've seen governments do this. My own business is being hurt by sales tax laws that have been passed here, or not passed, but changes to the US Supreme Court level, which have basically made businesses in New Hampshire collect sales tax for other states. And what that has done is, is it's put businesses outside the country on notice to basically have an advantage, where they don't have to collect sales tax, they're not obligated to collect sales tax. It's a US Supreme Court rule, which means the jurisdiction's in the United States. Some business shipping from outside the United States into the United States isn't going to be collecting sales tax. So you're basically taking that business away from my business and giving it to a business outside the United States. And you're basically doing the same exact thing with these cigarette, increasing the age of cigarettes. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Chuck Redfern?
Chuck Redfern, 9 Colby Street. First of all, I just want to bring you back a few years when I was on council, and we had the issue of no smoking in restaurants. Very controversial. I think Keene was the first city to take up that issue, or we were among the first. It's now become a statewide initiative, and so it was the hardest vote, I think, I had to cast, one of the hardest ones, definitely. And because you were looking at the business owners and how they'd be affected, you know, you looked at the bars, in the restaurants, and you knew that a lot of the bar folks, friends of mine, whatever, would have a cigarette while having a drink, nothing wrong with that really, but it affects, it's secondhand smoke, it affects other people's health, not just the health of those folks. But the concern that I have is that it was a very difficult vote for us, but eventually we listened to the medical community, that's what swayed me. It wasn't really a lot of the debates about how they're going to lose some business, or somebody from out of state who's a lobbyist comes in and tells us that, you know, we really shouldn't be doing this at this level, but we should take it to the state level. And that, I agree with. This issue should be addressed by the state to raise the age to 21. So that's one thing. But in the meantime, Keene can address it, as it has many times, being the city leader in the whole state on a lot of initiatives, and this is just one more. As far as losing revenue, taxes, I've heard that referenced twice so far tonight, no revenue to the city will be lost because, guess what? The state doesn't share its tobacco taxing comp. They keep it all into their own funds. So we, the city, will not lose any by raising the age to 21. Granted, some of the, I do sympathize with some of the smaller business owners that, you know, are going to be affected marginally, I would think, but it's, overall, to me, it came down to a health issue, and if I was on council again, it would be a health issue. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I want to apologize for being late, I totally lost track of time, I apologize to you all, and I'm going to let you just continue doing that. Are you doing the time also?
Yeah, it's all good.
Is that okay?
It's all good.
Okay, so when we're through here and leave the thing, then I'll take it over.
Just keep on rolling.
You just carry on.
Dennis Lane?
Carry on.
Thank you, good afternoon. My name's Dennis Lane, I'm not a New Hampshire resident. I am the Executive Director of the Coalition for Responsible Retailing, we're a trade association that represents retail stores across several states, including New Hampshire. I'm also a retailer in Massachusetts, a convenience retailer, 44 years on the same corner. I'd like to begin by referencing something that really concerned me, that the very first speaker said, and I understand that smoking and tobacco, this is a very emotional issue for everyone, no matter what side of the issue you're on. But, I'm not quoting, but I believe that the young woman stated that we need to protect our young heroes, referencing people in the military. I train my staff, when someone comes into my store with a military ID, to say, "Thank you for your service." I say, "Thank you for your service." I would never, ever, ever want to be put in a position to tell a veteran who made a decision to go to a recruitment office and sign up to pick up arms and defend our country that they cannot smoke or cannot buy a vaping device as long as they're over the legal age of 18. That just makes no sense to me. If they, if they put themselves on the line, who are we to make a decision? The age of 18 allows people to vote for president, vote for mayor, vote for governor, vote for selectmen, get credit, get married, but we're going to tell them that they don't have the common sense to not smoke, but they've got the common sense to go to Afghanistan and maybe step on a landmine? Who are we to make that decision for people? I think the age of nanny government needs to just go away. I don't think that setting the age to 21 is going to solve the problem, because as the first speaker said, only 15% of people, according to her data, are buying products at retail stores. The vast majority are either on the internet or from social sources. So setting the age of 21, the internet's not checking IDs, we are, retailers are checking IDs. We have a firewall between underage people and people who are breaking the rules. So if the retailers are obeying the rules, why are we going to punish the retailers? It just makes no sense. It's not going to solve your problem. Education, 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 interaction at the store, that's what's going to solve the vaping problem in the schools. Setting the age of 21 is not going to impact people who are nowhere near the age of 21, as the previous speaker said. It's an extremely emotional issue. The last thing I want to say as a retailer is that our profitability is being challenged by increasing minimum wage, increasing workman's comp, increasing taxes. When you take something away from a retailer, even though it may be a small piece of their business, when you reduce our profitability, you reduce our ability to hire from the community. The vast... our ability to hire from the community. The vast majority of small format stores, jungle stores, vape shops, convenience stores, we hire from the community. If we're not breaking the rules, please, 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 do not take away our profitability. Because by taking away our profitability, you take away our ability to hire. And when you take away our ability to hire, the community ultimately suffers. And after everyone's done, I'll answer any questions. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Janine Leclerc.
I'll go down this way, too. So hi. My name's Janine Leclerc. I live at 29th Street in Keene. I am an integration specialist at Menanok Middle and High School and a wellness coordinator. So what that means is we're integrating wellness. This is a fourth year and then initiative for the middle and high school to do one of these topics that we're talking about tonight, and integrate wellness throughout in all subject areas and through the middle and high school. And part of our mission statement is, our wellness committee is committed to providing students and staff with the tools and resources to empower them to make good decisions for lifelong health and wellness. Through the use of education and prevention tools, topics will focus on health, we will focus on physical, mental, and social health. So this issue right here is live in the middle and high school. It is a hot topic. And the e-cigarettes and all of that, we are, that's where we're at right now. And what we base on the work that we do, the education, has to do with the YRBS. It's called the Youth Behavior Risk Survey and the Teen Assessment Project. So that's where, Kate spoke to it, that's where we get our data from. That's students who are actually filling out surveys and giving information for us to go to in the community. And our communities are very high risk in this area in particular. So 1 in 10 in high school students are smoking, 1 in 10. And 1 in 3 have tried vaping. And vaping is not just happening outside, it's happening right in the classrooms. This is a growing issue. They market towards the middle and high schools. They market especially towards these kids. They have things that we don't even know what they look like, and they're doing it right in the classroom. So this legislation, and I'm proud to live in this community, and that's what I think is wonderful. It doesn't, that's why people will come to live here, because we are able to tackle the issues and go and make the right decisions based on health and what is good for everybody. So I really appreciate you listening to everybody on both sides. And I'm also a part of, I grew up with, I'm 54, my parents grew up when smoking. We didn't know the effects of smoking. So I am a daughter. I have grown up with, and I have secondhand smoke damage. I've been in restaurants for years. So, you know, we didn't know then, but now we know things we didn't know back then. So as a, but that's what we do to be able to educate people to do this. And this whole vaping thing, there isn't enough information for that. But I can tell you that students are using it. And they are trying it. And all of us, adults and teachers and parents, are really struggling with this issue. And the other thing we haven't heard about is chewing, is the tobacco. That's another huge issue that students have as well, too. And that's another thing that they do, whether it's on the field, in the classroom, or wherever as well, too. So Kate has done, and not only Kate, but our community has come together in prevention and education in the last couple of years in a phenomenal way. From the hospital working together, from Maydak working together, from the Tobacco Coalition. And it's not about Menanok, it's not about Keene or Conville. It's about youth and it's about students and healthy communities. Kate has come into our school to work on the kick butt day. She comes into Health Fair. She worked with students with their senior projects on tobacco, wrote with representatives and legislators and stuff. So she walks the walk and she talks the talk. And we support that because anything that we can do, you know, to get this out, and I understand it. I understand all the other side as well, too. But it might be here, but it's still getting to them. So that's why raising the age that we can do that. So I really honor the work that you do and I appreciate having this format. And I do want it to continue to be a community that we live in. So I hope you support that initiative. So thank you.
Ian Matthews.
Good evening. Ian Matthews, 10 Sesame Street, Keene. I'd just like to say, you know, I don't have any wellness committee or anything such as last speaker, but I also don't have a 10-year-old girl reading off a script coming in here and saying what I wanted to say. That's just absolutely despicable.
Let's stick to the subject, sir.
Sorry, I've got that.
No more personal comments.
Okay.
Or give the microphone.
I've got asthma and COPD, and I've been vaping for the last three years. And I can breathe at night. I can, I do a lot of running and skateboarding, and I can breathe. Like it's, it's made a world of difference for me. And, you know, my girlfriend, my fiance hasn't, you know, she hasn't smoked in over a year now because of this. And it's just, it's made a world of difference. And, I mean, Keene, yeah, Dover did, you know, made a change, but Dover's not as much of a college town as Keene is. We get a huge population boom every August. And it would just take, it would, it would just exacerbate a lot of, a lot of issues that local businesses have. And I just don't think it would be beneficial for the city to make this, this change. Thank you.
Pam Rogerson Ruiz.
Hi, this is Pam Rogerson Ruiz. I live at 32 Washington here in Keene. I really am just here as a mom and a grandmother. I have five kids. Only one of them smokes. I'm a smoker. Never smoked in the house with my kids present, or in the car with my kids present, because I didn't think it was the right thing to do. So consequently, I only have one child out of five who smokes. I also have 12 grandchildren, not a smoker in the bunch, and I only have one under 13 years old. The problem, as I see it, is we're chasing unicorns here. We have a liquor that says you have to be 21 to buy beer. And yet, every Friday or Saturday night, you're gonna find half the teenagers in town are at a party. And they've either spiked the punch, or they've got beer hidden out back in a cooler. It happens, you know it does. We certainly don't want our kids on drugs. However, how many of the kids that we know have a stash of weed somewhere? And they're, they're using that as well. It's illegal, but they get it. And if we raise, we can raise it up to 21. We can do that. But it's not gonna stop them from getting what they want. Any more than it stops them from getting their, getting their high, or stops them from getting their weekend beer. If there's a will, there's a way. And yes, medically, we all know the pitfalls, you know? They're learning that in school. I have my own children and grandchildren, you know, are good examples of that. Graham, you still smoking? Nope, I've gone to vaping. Well, that's better than two packs a day. That was, that was what my 16-year-old said to me a couple of months ago. So, you know, that's just where I'm at. I really don't think raising the age limit is gonna be the solution to our problems. But thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Richard Durkey.
Hi, I'm Richard Durkey. I'm a senior at Keene High School from 27 Old Chesterfield Road in Spofford. And every month, I go down to Concord for the Governor's Youth Council. And, but more importantly, I attend Keene High School. And every time you go in the bathroom, and more often than not, there's students in there that are vaping, and they'll try to hide it as soon as you walk in the room. And I just think that's, that's kinda crazy to think about. I'm turning 18 in two months. And a lot of my friends in high school are already 18. And they're, they're able to get these products legally. And I think that's, that's kinda crazy. 18 is the age when you're, you know, you have the biggest desire to fit in. You're still living in home conditions that push you toward risky behavior. And I just don't think that it's old enough to make that kind of decision that's gonna affect you for years to come. And I just, I don't wanna go to a high school where people are vaping in the bathrooms, and on the bus, and in the classroom. But I don't think it's too far-fetched to not have that as an issue. And I don't wanna go, I don't wanna live in a city where people my age are able to expose themselves legally to these kind of addictive substances. So I don't think you put a price on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last card I have up here at this point is Ian Freeman.
Yep, I'm Ian Freeman, 63 Emerald Street. Just wanted to respond to a couple of the statements that have been made thus far. Randy, you started by saying that this isn't personal. Well, it absolutely is personal. When the proposal on the floor, and I'm glad to hear that the proposer actually doesn't want a prohibition on use. That was refreshing to hear. But regardless, it's still personal because business is personal. And this is going to affect people's businesses, as has been testified, too. Another speaker said, this is a health issue. We need to go with what the doctors have to say. And there's a lot of things that the doctors say that you should do, that people just don't do. You know, they say you shouldn't eat fast food. Does Keene wanna go ahead and prohibit fast food restaurants from being here? There's a lot of things that people should be free to make choices on, and we should know better that prohibition doesn't work. In fact, the lady who spoke from the middle school here, the teacher or staff member who it was, she already pointed out to you that prohibition doesn't work. Pointing out how people, young people in middle school are getting access to nicotine-related products. So it's clear that even though police can ticket or even arrest somebody for smoking under the age of 18, it still happens regularly. So whether we're talking about prohibiting the use, or we're just talking about prohibiting the sale, it's still gonna get into people's hands. It's still gonna get into young people's hands. What we've seen is, the solution here, of course, is education and showing people the consequences of using these products. Of course, we don't know what the consequences of vaping are, but initial, from what I've seen, initial results seem to suggest they're better. And I know plenty of people who use vape products who've gotten off of using smoked tobacco as a result of that. They feel better. And so prohibition doesn't work. I'd like to suggest that you reach out to Law Enforcement Action Partnership. The gentleman who runs the jail here in town, Rick Van Wickler, he's one of their members. And they used to be called Law Enforcement Against Prohibition. It's a group of mostly former police officers who've come to the conclusion that prohibition doesn't work. And they're against all prohibition. I'm talking about drug prohibition, prohibitions on prostitution, gambling, and a prohibition on the use of and/or purchase or sale of nicotine-related products. It never works. It never has worked. And force always creates unintended consequences. So please don't make more unintended consequences. Thank you.
Okay, everybody that filled out a card has had a chance to speak. At this point, I'll relinquish my command to the chairperson.
Oh, you will?
And it's all yours.
Okay.
I did fill out a card.
Did you give it to us?
Yeah, I gave it to the clerk.
And what's your name, please?
David Suther.
Pardon?
David Suther.
David Suther. Okay, we'll come right up.
Thank you.
We'll get to you in the back.
My name is David Suther. I live on Mott Road. I just have a few things to say real quick. You know, I'm a parent, Keene resident, and a community volunteer. I got involved with the Tobacco Coalition about a year ago while working to eliminate exposure to secondhand smoke at school bus stops. I'd like to tell you why I believe raising the age to purchase tobacco and nicotine delivery systems like vaping and Juul for our children in the community, and reducing access for the most vulnerable, would be a step in the right direction to ending the cycle of nicotine addiction. You know, we talk a lot about tobacco. The brunt of concern for me is nicotine addiction. Tobacco is a means of delivery for nicotine. Vaping is also a means for nicotine delivery, which explains why it's been pulled into the same category as tobacco products. Nicotine is a highly addictive substance. The addiction is physical, mental, and behavioral, meaning habitual users come to crave those chemicals. Users consciously design nicotine's effects and become dependent on actions involved with using nicotine in certain situations, such as after meals or when under stress. Nicotine's effect on developing brain is also more severe. And while proof of cause and effect is often difficult to obtain in clinical studies, use of animal models has provided substantial evidence that the limbic system, which controls cognition, emotion, and drug reward, is actively maturing during adolescence and is uniquely vulnerable to long-term modification by nicotine. But it's not just nicotine. A recent study titled "Adolescent Exposure to Toxic Bullying," with few exceptions, these toxicants are present whether the product contains nicotine or flavorings. Consequently, as with traditional cigarettes, messaging to teenagers must include warnings about potential risks through toxic exposure to carcinogenic compounds generated by these products. I'd also like to say as a veteran, that the minimum age, minimum age of military service does not equal readiness to enlist in a lifetime of nicotine addiction. Tobacco and nicotine use is not a right or a privilege. It is an addictive and deadly activity. It has negative impact, a negative effect on military preparedness. And the Department of Defense has an initiative in place for military installations to be tobacco-free by 2020. While I believe there would be little negative impact on the business slash economy of Keene and a large positive impact on the citizens, um... I'll stop with that. In conclusion. And you know what? I'm gonna stay at Engle. How's that? So when we last had this meeting, I believe it was Counselor Clark came up and he said to you, "Did you run for office to protect the health and well-being in the citizenry, or to protect business profits?" And if it was, you know, if the monetary impact is that much of a concern, when you consider the 735 million, the annual healthcare costs related to tobacco, or the Medicaid cost of 139 million, or the resident state income from smoking caused government expenditures at 875 dollars a household, or the smoking caused productivity losses of 506 million in New Hampshire, really, where does this balance out? You know, how much money are the businesses losing? How much money is the state losing? How much quality of living are the people in your lives losing? That's the real cost we have to address here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, in the back.
Yeah, sorry I'm late and didn't get a chance to get a card in. I'm Bradford Hutchinson, 35 Acre Street. Anyway, I'll be as quick as I can. I think I have a possible solution. I didn't hear first speakers. But while I can support in general the spirit of the people that want to raise the age, I don't think that it's appropriate. I think it's wrong. And I would suggest to the committee that they not suggest to the council, recommend to the council, that further action be taken that's been proposed. A few years ago, when we had a problem with so-called spice being sold in stores in town, that was research chemicals, God knows what they are, being sprayed on some random herbs and put in a package and sold in stores. And I spoke out strongly against that. And I said that I think the city should regulate that. It's appropriate for the city to regulate that because every store in town has to have a city license of some kind. There's procedures in place, there's a bureaucracy in place for the city licensing retail establishments in Keene. And the city shouldn't allow unlabeled chemicals, God knows what it is, they're not labeled. That shouldn't be allowed to be sold because it's not labeled. If they were properly labeled, they might speak in favor of it. This is vaping, this is something different. Those spices, that was basically black market underground products that were being sold openly in retail stores.
Tobacco. Get back to tobacco.
I understand.
Okay.
This is tobacco and vaping, right?
Yes.
Yes, this is tobacco and vaping. And that's what I'm talking about now. These are all commercially produced, openly produced, legally produced products. They have manufacturers' names on the packaging. They have ingredients on the packaging. People know what they're buying. There's no fraud. There's no deception. They're openly sold in stores. And I think because of what it is with tobacco, the city council is not the appropriate venue to be dealing with these laws. The state of New Hampshire has tobacco laws. The state of New Hampshire has tobacco tax. There's no such thing as a city of Keene tobacco tax. So the city of Keene, as a legislative matter, I don't believe has the legitimate authority to raise the age for a product that the city can't otherwise regulate or tax. This is something that should be happening at the state level. So the proposed solution that I would suggest to the committee is that either a resolution or a proclamation be recommended to the full council, and that the full council issue a strongly awarded as you want, proclamation or resolution or something like that, to the state legislature. And then the people in the Keene community that are doing this, they will have, they will know that they have the full backing of the city council when they go to Concord and get the geriatric daycare up there to take care of this issue at the state level. This is not something that the city council should be doing, and I'm saying this as a matter of bureaucracy and legislative appropriateness, that the council is not the appropriate level for this to be dealt with. But I would support a resolution or a proclamation, and I think that might be an excellent resolution to the situation here.
Thank you.
Because you're not going to, they've already testified, they're not keeping it out of the schools. Will raising the age help keep it out of the schools? Maybe. It could have the opposite effect, and by making it more forbidden, it might have more impetus for them to have more in the schools.
Thank you, Brad.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, has everybody spoken for the first time that wishes to speak? Okay, is there anyone for the second time? Again, it'll be three minutes, and we have our enforcer here. And since I missed some of you, please say your name and address again. Seven Minute Taker.
I think you did.
Andy.
Takes about three minutes to get up here.
You're doing fine.
Daniel Cavallaro, 341 Court Street. I just, I think there's sort of a contradiction. When they say they don't know enough about vaping, then how can you pass an ordinance that restricts vaping if we don't know enough about it? We do know about smoking. But they said, they claim they don't know enough about it, but we do know enough about it. I mean, Ricardo Pelosi from Italy, one of the top lung specialists in the world, he did a three and a half year study. Three and a half years, took people who never smoked in their lives, never vaped in their lives, and he did three and a half years of these people habitually vaping. And what did one of the best lung specialists in the world find? Nothing. Absolutely nothing. There's a lot of research out there. There's Public Health of England. Just because the FDA, I mean, you're talking about the FDA. How efficient has the FDA been? Not very. I mean, when it comes down to it, we're talking about real studies with real doctors, concrete information, 70-page studies on how much better vaping is, and they've concluded it's 95% at least safer than smoking. So if they don't know how safe it is, how can you pass an ordinance in the city of Keene to make vaping from 18 to 21 if we know nothing about it? That doesn't make sense to me. Makes absolutely no sense. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, in the back there on the shirt?
Actually, my first time.
Okay. If you have a card, then you.
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Skylar Rice, 238 Basell Road. I just, I purchased a vape in Keene a couple of years ago. I recently gave that vaporizer to a neighbor of mine to encourage him to quit smoking because that's what I used to quit smoking myself. I haven't smoked in years because I purchased a peppermint vape and I was able to downgrade the nicotine in the vapor to quit smoking. And I just think that it's interesting that it seems sort of politically expedient to target a group of people who aren't as likely to vote and take rights away from them. I just think that this is a freedom, a freedom to make a poor decision. Poor decisions like drinking soda, eating red meat, voting, driving a car, things that all carry inherent risks. And voting is one of those rights that carries an inherent risk, and it seems kind of ironic to me that in this case, that very right could be what's used to cause harm to a particular group of people by extracting rights from them. It just seems kind of contradictory to me that one thing that could be used to cause harm will be used to cause harm by taking rights away and freedoms away from a group of people.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I apologize that I didn't pick out a card.
That's all right.
I was a little bit late and didn't realize it. My name is Jay Edison. I'm a retired physician living in Marlboro, 433 Main Street. I'm just amazed at how people are wanting to, are concerned about their rights when we're dealing with a poison. For many years, I've been involved in programs, working with people who are smokers in churches and schools. I'm just a couple of years in New Hampshire, so, and I'm involved with the Coalition here. I've been involved in working with smokers in state prisons in New York, and even one program on public television. But more than that, I've had a lot of personal involvement with people who are suffering from the effects of nicotine. And people are talking about these vaping as being so much safer as though it was candy, and many times they make it like candy with all their flavors. And I'd just like to share with you a few sentences from an article in the New England Journal of Medicine, September 20 of this year. "Pod-mods may deliver an addictive dose of nicotine without an aversive user experience or other tobacco-related deterrents, which may be one reason why 80% of 15- to 24-year-olds who try Juul continue using the product and why social media posts say addicted to Juul are common." You know, they're making them like candy. They're trapping these kids into addiction to a poison. You know, they talk about why are we concerned about these things when we have the opioid crisis? Well, believe it or not, far more people die from nicotine than die from the opioids. They just don't die as fast, so it doesn't make the same headlines. Another quote, "They are inconspicuous, closely resembling computer USB drives. Young people can therefore readily conceal them, and teen use of pod-mods on school grounds, including use during class time, is reportedly widespread." Skipping down, "Jules are available in attractive sounding flavors, including creme, fruit medley, mango, and cool mint." Now, don't tell me that's not aimed at young people or children. Farther down, "These cigarettes are not without cigarettes. Their aerosol can include metals, volatile organic compounds, and flavoring additives which may be harmful when inhaled, particularly to adolescent users." "Nicotine adversely affects the developing brain and causes addiction." And I'm just skipping down through here. "E-cigarette use may increase the risk for combustible cigarette smoking." Many times, these things are entry-level drugs. They lead to cigarettes. I heard people saying, "Well, they're good because they help people get off of cigarettes." Well, I'm sure that does happen sometimes. And they're virtually indistinguishable from USB drives. And finally, one last thing. On April 18, 2018, six public health organizations urged the Food and Drug Administration, the federal agency charged with regulating e-cigarettes, to take action to prevent Juuling by young people. Comprehensive actions are needed because we've got a very crucial age group between 18 and 21, and many of them get pregnant for the first time, and it has devastating effects on that unborn child. And, well, I save my case.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for the second time?
My name is Kylie Tenny, and I live on 122 Eaton Road. Sorry if I sound shaky. I'm not good at speaking. So I just wanted to make a point that I'm 18. I'm not in high school, so I can't bring vapes into a high school. I started smoking when I was 17, but I also mixed it in with vaping too when I turned 18 because I was still in high school when I turned 18. And I never vaped in school. Me and my close friends never did that. We would normally do it on like our study hall times, so we would leave the school and then come back. I feel like the issue within the high schools is that you have these people who are already troublemakers, and they just want to make more trouble, so they vape in the school. I wasn't the best student, but I didn't try to, I tried to obey the rules and do my best to like be respectful to the school. I went to Menanoff, and I don't understand how, I'm not friends with any people in high school, so I don't bring vape stuff to them. That doesn't account for all the 18 or 19-year-olds who might still have relations, but I know that for me personally, I don't want to quit smoking just because of the bad choices of others. You can take with that what you will. I just wanted to state my point from my point of view as an 18-year-old who never vaped in high school.
Great. Thank you. You did a good job. You did a good job.
Oh, thank you. I feel like I'm going to pass out or something.
There was no shakiness at all. Thank you again for, this is my second time up, but I appreciate giving the opportunity. I'm John Sheeran, the Executive Director of the New England Convenience Store and Energy Marketers Association. I just want to address a couple of things very briefly. The doctor referenced the FDA, and that's true. The FDA did declare war on this epidemic, and they're working through it. Recently, in fact, maybe my days are coming together here, but yeah, I think it was yesterday, they came out and said, "Of all the things they could have done, what they're targeting is internet sales." And as one, for one who knows a fair amount about this, I was thrilled that that's what they're targeting. They could have addressed, they could have suggested raising the age to 21. They could have suggested eliminating all flavors, but instead they're going after the internet, which I think is a fabulous first place to start. So the FDA was referenced. I wanted to make that clear. The other thing I wanted to point out is this. Everybody that spoke out against this particular issue is speaking out against the harm of these products and tobacco and addiction and all of that. I think we can all agree, I mean, this is why we're here. We want to keep middle schoolers and high schoolers away from these products. That is something I think everyone in this room can agree to. The question we're asking ourselves is raising the age to 21, will that do it? That's what we need to focus on here. And earlier I made the case that I don't believe that will do. In fact, if you're going to do something like that, if you're going, this is the last, this is my major point that I made earlier. If you are going to do that as a body that represents both the public health as well as the business people in this community, you better be sure that what you're doing that's going, that you know is going to affect their businesses, is going to have the effective result. Thank you very much. Open questions?
Okay, thank you. Yes, anyone, I'm going to save you for the last, okay? Anyone else? All right, go ahead.
Hi, Richard Doogie, 27 Old Chester Brook, Still. I just wanted to say in response to the argument that it's taking away a right, I just want to say that I think that you need some sort of regulation on what age that you're going to make a limit, you know what I mean? Unless you're going to allow it all, to all kids to have anything they want. But I think you're going to need some age where you're going to have to put a limit, and I don't, and I don't know that I know exactly what that age is, but I think if you admit that you're, you need to come into this conversation, there has to be one, and then the conversation can start. And I just think that with what we know about the brain and how it develops, I just don't think that 18 is the right age. I don't think you can say that at that time you're ready to make that decision. And I'm not sure that 21 is the right age either. I do think it needs to be higher than it is now.
Thank you. Yes, for the second time.
So I had brought up Skylar Rice, 238 Basell Road. I had brought up earlier about it taking away a right and using it to quit smoking and hopefully helps someone else to quit smoking because smoking is clearly a bad decision. You know, we were talking about taking these products out of the hands of younger people and helping to protect people. I think that protecting people is a noble aspiration. However, where does it stop? Again, when I bring up this taking away a right, it's a right to make a bad decision. It's part of being an adult, and I think it's part of, one of the most fun things about being an adult is the right to make bad decisions with your life. I think everybody in this room has probably made quite a few. And, you know, there are lots of things that you can do as a young person that carry with them an inherent risk. Again, I brought up driving. I brought up voting. I brought up eating red meat, drinking sugary sodas. Again, where does it stop? Where is the line between our ability and decision to make responsible decisions on our own and where the government needs to step in to parent us? I think that it's more important to have people, especially young people, learn these life skills to make the right decisions on their own with education.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dennis Lane Coalition for Responsible Retailing. Thanks for the second opportunity. I remember when I turned 18, it was a long, long time ago, but when you turn 18, you get really, really excited. And I think one of the reasons, and I have some folks that work for me who are in that age range, and when they turn 18, it's a really, really big deal. And I think the thing that makes it a really, really big deal is that society finally recognizes you as an adult. You're a mature person. You can go out and vote for the president. You can take out a school loan. You don't need your parents' permission to stay out past 11 o'clock at night. You're making adult decisions because you're being treated as an adult. So I guess my question to the board is, do we reevaluate the age of majority? Do we reevaluate all of the benefits that come with turning 18? And do we say, "Well, we're going to select a few rights, and we're going to take them away from you because you're not 21"? Or are we going to say you can't go to the draft board? You can't go to the recruitment center and join the military? You can't get married? You can't get a student loan? You can't go out and get a credit card? So it seems like there is a double standard, and I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I sort of shut Kate McAlley off last, at our last meeting, so I said she could have last dibs. So this will be the last person to speak. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you again. I just want to show you this. This is what a Juul looks like. So when they're talking about the discreet use of the product, it fits really handily, it's really disposable, it's really kind of...
Will you just hold it up when you're over there because that's...
Oh, hold it up over there?
Yeah, so the television people can see.
Okay. So this is what a Juul looks like. This is just one of the products that are out there, and it is getting a lot of attention by the FDA because the FDA is concerned about the extremely high use and the prevalence of this kind of electronic device. There are many others out there. So in response to some of the things that were said, I just have to say that policies work for prevention, and they're actually pretty inexpensive. We don't have a lot of funding to fund more programs in our schools or more prevention programs. Really, what we do know works are the best practices and policies. They are really effective in preventing mortality and morbidity caused by things that are very dangerous for us. And I've got to say, 480,000 people die every year from tobacco use. That's more than any other preventable causes of death combined. That's like four plane crashes a day. And if four planes crashed today, everybody'd be really alarmed. A lot of faces are going down, and we don't know who they are, but people are dying every single day from tobacco use. Our concern is about... Our concern is about preventing kids from starting. The danger in the vapes, the danger in tobacco products is the nicotine. It's an addictive drug. And even though kids may not mean to be addicted, and I know I was one of those kids, when I started smoking, my mom said, "You'll never be able to stop." And I'm like, "What do you mean, I won't be able to stop? Of course I'll be able to stop, because I know better." You know, I didn't stop because I got addicted to the nicotine and that's what's happening with our kids and using the vape products that have nicotine in them. They do have humectants in them, which are flavorings, different candy flavors and that kind of thing. They're very, very attractive for the kids. We really want to create a gap so that they're not quite successful in the schools. Will it solve our problem? No, it's not going to solve our problem. It's going to be a multi-faceted, multi-faceted approach that's going to make a change in reducing mortality and morbidity. So we know that it's comprehensive. So this is just one, reducing access to tobacco products is just one of the ways that we help to prevent youth tobacco use and to prevent adults from actually using as well. So we know these strategies actually work. And for the gentleman that comes from Massachusetts, Massachusetts passed a state law. So that's, you know, I can't wait to see how that goes for them, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that we know from the Needham experience, the Needham, Massachusetts passed an ordinance in 2005 banning flavored products and increasing the age from 18 to 21, and they haven't reported any difficulties and have it closed down. The stores there are still in operation. And then the last thing I really want to point out is that the Leadership Council for Helping Menadnok has sent a letter in support of this initiative. The Leadership Council for Helping Menadnok created a program or created a plan for our region called the Community Health Improvement Plan. It closely mirrors the state's health improvement plan. These are researched strategies, researched goals by these organizations at the state level and in our own community. Partners who have education, who have medical backgrounds got together and they identified seven priority areas, including tobacco. And they asked us to work on strategies that we know will work. And we know prevention and policy changes are effective tools. We're not arguing that some people may have had success with quitting tobacco. I am really happy about that. There are lots of ways to quit, we know what the evidence-based strategies are. To date, the vapors aren't an evidence-based strategy. Maybe they will be someday, but I say, why take the risk now? If they are ever found to be completely safe, then we can make that decision then. We can't wait for Concord, we can't wait for the feds, we need to protect our community. It's grassroots action that's going to save this Menadnok region from seeing the increase in addiction with our youth. So I just want to stress that. It's part of our, our Community Health Improvement Plan for the region. Our community leaders are in favor of prevention, treatment, and also eliminating exposure to secondhand smoke. And we're right in line with that. These are evidence-based best practices for prevention. And you've done the right thing in the past and I hope you'll continue to do the right thing by, somebody actually mentioned that they didn't think we have the authority. Our community does have the authority, it's written into the state law. So the state law, the RSA 126K, I think it's item number 14, gives, gives the authority to communities and counties to actually make policies such as this one. So we do have the authority as a community. So let's be local and let's do what we need to do to take care of our kids. That's all I have for you.
Thank you.
I'll answer any questions.
Do you have a question?
I have several questions.
Oh, how do I want to do this? Okay.
First of all, yes, thank you very much for bringing this, this forward. I think that, you know, that we've seen a lot of health information, specifically about tobacco, that I don't think anybody here has contrasted with regard to tobacco. I think there, there has been some information provided to us by the folks in the community, from the vaping community. My understanding is that this is a state law. It was instituted in 1998. It allowed, when they raised the age to 18, that they allowed the communities to choose, that they could go above 18 but not below 18. You've been working locally and you've also said that you're, you're in contact with other cities and towns. My understanding is Dover has been a separate effort than yours?
Yes.
Okay, and then your last presentation, you had somebody from Ohio here?
Oh, from the National Tobacco 21 Organization.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just surprised why you're not focused with the Tobacco 21 people and the Dover people. We've got all these different groups, there are 221 towns in the state of New Hampshire, there are 13 cities in the state of New Hampshire. You were lauding the fact that the.
We work together, I mean, we're part of the Tobacco Freedom Action Network.
Right, you were lauding the fact that the state of Massachusetts has passed the law, but why don't you concentrate your efforts on Concord?
We, we will. I think we absolutely will. And we, you know, something that we are working on as a community, but we, we know that local action is really what's going to drive the force. I mean, we, we hope that Concord will do it. And there's a lot of things that we wish Concord would do, we wish they didn't take our settlement agreement money and put it towards another fund. We wish we had money for prevention and cessation from Concord and it's just not the political climate to get that done right now. So we really need to do it.
Because I think, I think that basically Concord has just kicked the ball down the road. You know, they did it with the Keno issue, they did it with the tobacco issue.
Do you have another question for me?
Yes, I do.
Please just ask the question and then we can talk about this, that we can talk about it.
Are you working with the town of Swansea?
Yes.
You are. Is this something that they are looking to pencil?
Yes.
Is there anybody in the audience here who owns a convenience store from Swansea that, that is opposed to this?
This is not what we do, Paul. We really step it out of line here.
Well, thank you very much for your time, because anybody could jump on the, the City Express and go down to Swansea for a dollar and go buy tobacco products.
In response to that, I'll just say that kids are actually sensitive to price and they are sensitive to transportation issues. So you're not really likely to see that. So there's been a lot of research that, that's been done around the country that shows that changing the location and the, the density about, for tobacco availability really does make a difference in the access and, and the rates of youth use. So like you said, there will be outliers. We have a tobacco, a smoke-free policy at the hospital, but not every person that comes there obeys that policy. So there will be outliers, it probably won't be perfect. We're not out there calling the police because somebody's not obeying the policy. We, you know, there will be exceptions, but we really feel like for the greater good that you're going to see the best output and the best outcome by instituting this kind of method. It's been proven to work in other communities around the country.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You weren't done, thank you very much. So I want to thank everyone for their input. Anyone that filled out one of these and if you, whatever your comments were, if there were comments or if it was just your name and you were in favor or you were not, will go into the written record. So if you next week look at the record for, tonight, you will see your written comments as well as whatever you said. The next step is that this will go next week before the city council. And at that time, you're certainly welcome to be there. The public does not talk at a city council meeting, so it will be a discussion amongst the city councilors. What we're going to do right now as a committee is talk about, do we want to recommend going forward and writing an, asking staff to write an ordinance or not? So feel free to stay and listen, that would be great. Okay, so Bob, you had lots of things to say, and this is what I want you to say.
Okay, I just actually, I have a question for the city attorney.
Great.
If I'm late.
You certainly.
Mr. City Attorney. Does the city of Keene have the authority to enforce this if, if a regulation is changed to increase the age?
Actually, the, the comment was made this evening about the city's authority with respect to this, and as you know, oftentimes I'm in the unhappy seat of having to tell the city council that, you know, the state hasn't provided municipalities with specific authority to act in a specific area, because as you know, we can only act with the authority that the state gives us. And interestingly enough, this statute does, and Ms. McNally was correct, it's section 14, does give the local communities the specific authority to enact local ordinances and bylaws that are more restrictive than the state. With respect to the enforcement action on this, primary enforcement for tobacco, like primary enforcement for alcohol, occurs through the Liquor Commission. However, the statute also gives specific authority to local law enforcement officers to, to enforce the statute as well, is would also be true if the city council decided to adopt a specific ordinance. So there's authority.
Okay, so, so the question I have is somebody could legally purchase at age 18 outside the city of Keene, come back to Keene and then, and they would no longer be legally possessing it in the city of Keene?
Well, that depends. Right now, the statute, which is in effect in the city, has the 18 age limit. As you know, the proposal is to increase the age to 21. Now, it seems to me that the law does give you the right, if you wanted to do that, to regulate the sale, not necessarily the possession of tobacco products. Then you would default back, it seems to me, to the state statute. You know, I have some thoughts about that. I mean, it seems to me to be a little bit problematic to have a sale prohibition to be 21, but not to have the possession prohibition to be the same. It starts to set up unpleasant, I think, ambiguities. Whether or not the city council wants to do that, that's up to the city council. You know, this is sort of uncharted territory to a large extent, as we've discussed this evening. Dover was the first community to kind of get on this path in New Hampshire. The Dover ordinance does prohibit both the sale and possession of tobacco products, any cigarette products, you know, under age 21. So they didn't face that kind of ambiguity and, you know, quite frankly, I think it's cleaner to do it that way, if you were going to do it that way. But in whether or not the courts ultimately, because it's ultimately the courts that make the decisions about these things, would, would allow a bifurcated ordinance, that's, that's another question.
Anything else?
Not at this point.
Not at this point. Okay, so how do you feel? Do you want to start, Gary?
Sure. Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for all the information you've passed along to us. It's, it's been quite a bit of reading and it's very educational. I don't think there's anybody sitting in this room that probably has been affected in some fashion over the years with people who may have become ill from smoking. I know I have, both of my parents died of smoking. However, for me to make a decision for this community isn't, can't be based on emotion for me, has to be based on the facts. There is good facts on both sides of the aisle here. However, I believe that for me, looking at the school systems and, and how it works, I understand how we're trying to bump up that age to be able to stay away from people in school. I know when I was in school, I was 18, drinking age was 18. It put a lot of pressure on me as people would always approach me and ask me to buy alcohol for them. Didn't do that, I didn't drink myself in high school. But there are many people who are 18 that are in high school today who face that. I would much rather see even a phase-in program to get the age higher than 18. Not necessarily 21 all at once, there could be, for me, I'd like to see possibly a phase-in program over the next few years to try to help not only the businesses react to it, but also to the people who are already using these types of devices, to be able to help them move forward through it as well. I am in favor of increasing the age, I'm not sure 21 is it for me yet, but that's where I stand at this point. A lot of great information has come forward, I sat and listened to both sides of the stories, and it's been helpful for me to be able to even get to that point, because it's been a battle for me, looking at the legality side of it and looking at the emotion side, trying to bring that together.
Thanks.
Hey, with brief, Councilor Lamro that sent this, hit this committee several weeks ago. You know, admittedly, this is, a lot of things come before council committees are slammed down. It's like we virtually know where we're going with it. This wasn't one of them. And anybody that I've spoke to, and I've gone on social media to, you know, ask our constituents what their feeling is, because obviously my vote is their vote. And kind of like here, it was, it was split, you know, pretty much right down the middle depending on who you talked to. A couple of things that were mentioned tonight though, you know, about 18-year-olds, you know, being in the military and how they could never tell a veteran, "No, we can't sell you cigarettes." Well, I was a veteran and, you know, I did go into a bar and they said, "Drinking age is 21, thanks for your service, but get out." So, you know, there is a precedent where some products, you have to be 21 whether you like it or not. So that precedent has, has already been set. I, I do agree this, this is a flawed ordinance just because it really should be at the state level. There's no question the state kicked the can down the road, but nonetheless, they kicked the can down the road and it landed in our lap. So whether we like it or not, you know, we have to deal with it. Up until almost yesterday, you know, kind of like 51%, 49% kind of swinging back and forth, and I was going to vote against it. But it was until this morning, when I just started doing more research, that I came across that FDA report that declares youth vaping is an epidemic in high schools. And it was in numbers, you know, more than 2 million non-smoking high school students took up, you know, e-cigarettes, basically because they, they thought it was cool. So the FDA report is very interesting, I'm not going to read the whole thing, I found it very informative, whether you agree with all, you know, government bodies, well, that remains to be seen, but the FDA is, they did write a very thorough and interesting report. So as of tonight, and I'm not saying as of next Thursday, I'm saying as of tonight, I will be going in agreement with the ordinance. And once again, I'll be honest, for me, it's, it's almost like 51% to 49%, but the healthcare part of it is the part that influences me the most. You know, several years back, when the whole opiate epidemic started, myself and Councilor Clark were co-chairs of the city's committee on heroin and substance abuse. One thing that we found back then, as we started doing research, was that one of the major problems that started this whole problem was legal opiates. Once again, a legal product restricted, restricted but legal. And, you know, everybody was told, "Well, don't worry about them, they're not addictive." Well, you know, lo and behold, here we're at. So I look at it this way, you know, if, if, you know, if the city council needs to step forward and, you know, to take a risk and say, "You know what, we think it's in our best interest at this point to restrict the sale of what could be a very addictive product", then we do. Will everybody agree with it? No, probably about 50% won't. And that's why we're elected to make the decision. So at this point tonight, I will vote to go along with the ordinance, but once again, we'll see what happens next week at the full council Thursday night. But, you know, honestly, some information that could come on in the next week that possibly change my mind, I don't think so, but we'll see where it goes.
Okay, well, thank you. Bob?
Well, we don't have an ordinance yet.
Not yet.
But, you know, and I think that would, there would be numerous conversations in there. The hospital, it's interesting that we have representatives from the hospital pushing against, you know, the distribution of, of tobacco, and yet they are probably the biggest distributors or at least subscribers of opiates. So one of the bigger epidemic that we face. I've talked to a number of businesses, I've listened to business owners, I've listened to the community, I've read a lot of the information. I don't think anybody can deny that the health issue is very important here. I think that as, as Counselor Filio just attested, that we, you know, we have Concord kicking the can down the road and it's becoming a problematic issue. It's problematic relative to enforcement, it's problematic relative to possession and, you know, is it legal? It's legal the next town over, but not here. I think that most of the people that I've spoken to who own convenience stores and they would, they would argue that they don't sell cigarettes, they sell convenience. They sell gas, they sell food, the market basket, the basket we were talking about before. And their biggest concern is that. And their biggest concern is that we would basically be handing over part of their business to adjacent towns, to competitors outside our community. So I think it's problematic on that. It's not an issue for taxes for the city. It's not an issue for that. It's an issue that we're, we were putting in place an unlevel playing field. And I would appreciate if the petitioner and Tobacco 21 would focus on Concord instead of city by city, town by town. So I'll be voting against it for only that reason. I think that this is a health issue that needs to be addressed. I think it's something that we all, like we said, we all grew up, I mean, you used to be able to buy cigarettes out of a vending machine. So I just, I'm troubled by this, but I'll be voting against it at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, me. I will be voting in favor of this for several reasons. The first one is that, you know, I really, it is a health issue, and to target the youth seems really important. And for those in the vaping community, unfortunately for you, you got lumped into tobacco sales. So we can say, you know, we don't want kids buying cigarettes, we don't want them buying chew. And unfortunately, we also have to say, and we don't want them vaping. My concern with vaping is that there are many high school students that think, "I'll be cool, I can do this, and there won't be any consequences." And I think we've all, in our lives, said, "I can do this, there won't be any problems." And lo and behold, many of us found problems. I went off the road one time thinking, "I can drive to Concord even though this is no store. I'm a good driver, I can always..." Right off the bat. So that's, maybe that's a little far-fetched to what we're talking about, but it's the same thing, we get into this thinking. So I see this as not targeting vaping, and if you choose to take it personally, I'm sorry for that. You're part of tobacco and nicotine, and so you're included in this. I do believe it is a brain disease. It starts first in the brain. Nicotine is just a magic drug. I used to call alcohol a magic drug because it could make you feel better. Well, that's, you know, nicotine is even more magic, because if you're tense, "Give me a cigarette," and what do you do? You go, "Calm right down." If you need to rev up, "Let me smoke a cigarette." So that's pretty magic. That's changing the way your brain thinks very quickly, and to me, that's dangerous. And if we can keep young adults from not doing it and giving their brains a bigger chance to develop in a healthy way, that's great. I would love to see personally that someone couldn't go into the service till they're 21, but nobody asked me that, so we'll let that one go. So I will be voting in favor of this. Now, do we want to talk some more? We've said how we feel. Do we want to talk some more? Do we want to take a vote?
Can I just add?
Yeah, sure.
I think one of the comments that the city attorney made is very relevant if we're going to move forward with an ordinance, that it's purchase and possession, so that we eliminate the issue of having an issue with some conflict within the ordinance and how we're going to deal with that.
Okay. You're okay with that?
Yes.
You're not in favor of it at all?
Well, I'd be in favor of us, you know, like one of the constituents here spoke about us authoring a resolution to the state, but, you know, I probably wouldn't get a second here. But I'm wondering whether that's the appropriate process, because there are any number of issues beyond just the possession and sale that we might have to deal with. I mean, what about distribution of nicotine chewing gum at the hospital, or any other smoking cessation programs to people under the age of 21? I mean, there are going to be people who are having access to this. What is it that we, I think there are other things to deal with on this, rather than just, you know, saying we're going to go ahead with an ordinance. I think that the city council should at least see a first reading of an ordinance, be able to discuss what we're, how we want to address some of these issues. It's a convoluted situation. You know, you can go through the state law, and there are all kinds of different line items for different things that might affect how we author such an ordinance.
Okay. I hear what you're saying. Now, the motion would be to recommend that staff draft an ordinance. That, once staff drafts that ordinance, it would come back to this committee.
For first reading?
For first, it'll start right back here in this committee. And I think by asking them to draft an ordinance, they're going to, you know, they're going to come with the problems.
Madam Chair, if I may suggest, I want to just make sure I'm clear about what you may be suggesting. My suggestion, and I think this is what you're saying, is that the recommendation to the city council would be for the staff to prepare a draft ordinance for the raising the age for the sale and possession of tobacco products and e-cigarettes to 21. Now, we would come back into this committee without an ordinance number at that point, because you may want to suggest, as the counselor is pointing out, to do some wordsmithing and suggest some significant changes to that before it goes back to the council. Is that what you're considering at this point?
That's what I was trying to say. You said it so much better. That makes sense, Bob?
Yeah. I mean, I just think it makes sense, because there are things we probably haven't thought about yet that we might want to address.
Okay. All right. Would somebody, you want to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll move that we recommend to the full council that staff draft an ordinance to change the age of sale and possession of all tobacco and nicotine products from 18 years old to 21 years old, and such resolution gets brought back to this committee for first reading.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor? Three opposed, one. All right. Thank you very much. That ends our meeting for tonight. Thank you all for coming and staying. We'll see you all again, I hope.
We'd like to invite you to visit FreeKeen.com. FreeKeen.com features audio, video, and blogs chronicling the transition to a voluntary society. FreeKeen.com also has comments and discussion forums, so you can be heard. FreeKeen.com.
I should be in Keene, New Hampshire with the Free Staters.